Just so you know.
Yeah.
Ready?
Wow, they all got quiet all of a sudden. Monday, February twenty fifth, twenty nineteen, regular session at Anamosa City Council, City Hall Council Chambers. One point oh roll call.
Rich.
Here.
Kay, here. John?
Here.
Rod?
Here.
Cody?
Here.
Betty, here.
Two point oh pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Three point oh motion to approve the minutes from the following meeting, February eleventh, twenty nineteen, regular council meeting.
So moved.
Second.
First by Rich, second by Betty. Any changes or anything? All those in favor signify by saying yes.
Yes.
Opposed, carried. Four point oh public hearings, none. Five point oh presentations, five point one Jackie Snyder, Snyder Weir's insurance.
Thanks for having me. I'm coming with good news because I'm wearing patch, which is always good. Um, I'm your insurance agency. I bought the agency from Harry Weir's, so he could not be here tonight. I wish he would be joining me here. So we wanna first off thank you for your business. And the city's insurance policy is with a safety group that is managed by EMC, which is the insurance carrier. They're in a group with a number of other cities throughout the state of Iowa. And all the premiums are collected and after expenses and claims, they issue what's called a dividend. And that dividend gets issued every year. There's only been two years since it's thirty nine years of existence that cities have not got a dividend. This year was exceptionally good because a lot of the cities performed really well. I made a few copies here of the check that I delivered to Jacob this last week. And last year, the check to the city was twenty seven thousand four hundred and one dollars. I delivered a check this week, or last week, to Jacob for forty six thousand sixty two dollars and eighty cents. So how they can do that is they average a three-year performance of all the cities in the safety group. And based on that performance, they issue these dividends. The dividend that's been issued here, even though we've had a bad work comp performance in the policy, still allows cities to collect a dividend to enter back a year revenue stream. So that's that. We do know Jacob and I work hand in hand on the insurance policy and the performance of the policy. And we do in twenty nineteen have an action plan to improve the work comp mod, which is basically a performance rating. And uh, next week, we're gonna go out with a loss prevention specialist and walk through the city to analyze risk areas that could potentially create a liability or a work comp situation, especially around the fire department area because that seems to be the leading cause of losses within your policy. So we're taking a proactive approach to improve the performance of um, the work comp to offer a greater dividend in the future. Do you have any questions for me?
Always happy to see my come on with. Well, it took years. Thank you.
Thanks Jackie.
Thanks Jackie. Six point oh proclamations, none. Council action items, seven point oh community betterment, seven point one discussion possible action on resolution setting the date for the public hearing on the proposed annual budget for fiscal year ending June thirtieth, twenty nineteen.
I'll make the motion to set the date for March eleventh, two thousand nineteen at six P M. Second.
First by Rich, second by Cody to set it. March. And this is a roll vote.
Cody?
Yes.
Betty? Yes. Rich?
Yes.
Kay?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Rod?
Yes.
Seven point two discussion and possible action on resolution setting the date for the public hearing regarding application by Eagleview Land Development to rezone property in Meadowvee, Meadow Ridge Eighth Edition from eight R one to two R two.
I'll make the motion to set the di- public hearing date of March twenty fifth, two thousand nineteen at six P M.
Second.
First by Rich, second by John to set it.
Hi. I have a question. So is, when it's multi-family, do you mean like a condo setting as opposed to apartment building? Because people are asking.
Yeah, that's the, it's the condo theory on that land there.
And so when you're saying condo, um duplex two with the.
Duplex. Yeah.
Okay. I'll get by my lot.
And if uh, and it's not a big deal, but there, if it is restricted to duplex, because that is the plan, you know, you know, they're raising the concern. People concerned about there being like a fourplex or sixplex apartment building, that won't be the case. It's basically um, with the golf course on that side, it's owned R two.
Yeah.
So we thought, it's basically just the lots on the chamber is what we're looking at so that that could, that could be grouped together so both sides of the street could be one condo association. Cause I think in the past, the uh, the zero lot line type units have been better in some areas than others in town market wise, but I think out there with the course and with having it clustered where you can do, you know, one, one association where it'll take care of the snow and the lawn and then everybody can, I think it'll work a lot better than trying to have an individual here and there.
So the association will also like include um, like a roof? So when you have a roof over the two duplex condos, in some places here in town, you're purchasing your site, somebody else purchased theirs, but there's nothing for when the roof needs replaced if one can afford it and the other can't, or?
Yeah, that's, that's.
That's all gonna be included?
Normally the buildings isolate down to the buildings and the land gets put in the association. So that the land, that way everyone's yard's most the same and everything like that, but uh, the roofs in the building does come down to the people that.
But the developer can set that in the front end, correct?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, I'm not telling you to, I'm just saying what a great idea that would be.
Yeah, yeah, there's. There's been uh, there's been different discussions with that.
Okay.
I was getting the same questions Betty, I was gonna ask Bryce apartments or fourplexes and they asked me too and they wondered what it was going to be, so that's good.
Right, and association fees attached to condos when the developer puts that in up front?
Yeah.
It's better resale, it's better everything. I mean, that'd be great.
Yeah, and it needs to be done that way if it's gonna work, yeah, it is just the condo minimum type setting, so like I say, and it, it wouldn't bother me at all if we said it was isolated down to a duplex of a certain size. Cause I, I don't want a fourplex out there.
But current, but currently that zoning does not restrict that.
Right.
The zoning doesn't restrict it, but the lot size is at least in the preliminary plat wood.
Yeah.
There's no lot that is subject to a fourplex.
You would need a certain square footage of the lot.
Two thousand, two thousand square feet per living unit.
Per unit.
So if you had eight thousand square feet, you could put more.
You have to maintain the setbacks.
In the lots, yes, but there's, I don't think there's any.
Yeah.
It's more than where the budget and lot size is that low.
Yeah, I don't think there's enough for a hundred or forty like.
Yeah, and that, that's a question that.
And, and also your, your intention is not to develop up.
No. I look at it, I don't think the market will hold for anything two-story in town really.
Rentschild duplex, two-story garage.
The last, we were on the street there where we sold quite a few to younger families. I mean, the street last fall was, I think we sold four or five houses to people downsizing or wanting to move in town, so. We actually just sold the last one. We close on it tomorrow, but the last one that was done sold here a couple, three weeks ago, closes tomorrow, but that's the same thing, someone's coming in from the country and so.
Betty still wants to move to condo living.
It's coming.
Thanks Bryce.
You betcha.
And that too is a roll vote.
Betty?
Yes.
Rich?
Yes.
Kay?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Rod?
Yes.
Cody?
Yes.
Eight point oh public safety. Eight point one motion approval of the renewal of beer and liquor license, none. Nine point oh public works, none. Ten.
Thanks Bryce.
Finance, ten point one discussion possible action on the payment of bills for the month of February.
No to prove.
First by Betty.
I'll second.
Second by Kay.
Uh, I just have one question. Under John Deere Financial, there's, it says parts and supplies at an even hundred dollars.
You wanna know what that?
It's pretty rare that you'd have something from John Deere Financial that is even. And pretty vague on parts and supplies.
Yeah, it's hard to put all the detail into the grand plan, put it right now.
Well, while she's gone, why do we pay Real Water Due Association, Real Water Association dues?
That's a membership for our utility employees to get valuable training and resources from the organization. They're, they're members of the, the professional organization.
Okay.
They get CEUs. Or classes offered.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I just didn't know that there was real water in this part of the state.
It's, it's, it's a statewide organization.
Oh, well, where I used to live, I had it. I still have it on the farm, so yeah, I understand what it is, I just didn't know.
So yeah, they, they provide training for, for all municipal utility employees.
Okay.
And.
That was for the water department and that was? Yeah, it's kinda odd, um. Um, they had a, one bill for twenty four ninety-nine, one for eleven oh seven, one for sixty-three ninety-four. Came out two hundred bucks. And it's just basically tubing, uh, masonry stuff.
No, that's fine, you oversee, it's just strange to see an even hundred dollars.
Nasal. It is, thermometer, humidity, wireless humidity clock.
Say parts and supplies.
Yes, it came out two hundred dollars in, sorry, I have to talk to them.
I have another question. I see that you, the truck is being paid for and is my understanding that's being transferred to Parks and Rec? But I don't see a payment from Parks and Rec for the used truck they're getting. Is that not the way it's been done in the past?
I, I don't know what's been done in the past.
The way it's been done in the past is um, when the streets department, water, wastewater have a vehicle truck, in this case that they are um, selling, they wanna sell or trade. Um, a lot of times they'll just buy the newer or new used vehicle and then that old vehicle will be moved over to Parks and Rec. We don't charge Parks and Rec for that because it comes out of the general fund and it, they don't, we just, it was kind of a, it's kinda one of those things where we feel like it's more beneficial for them to use it than it is to trade it off and have the general fund pay, because our general fund has been very weak in the past and continues to be not one of our strongest ones.
But in the past, if um, the water plant or the water wastewater plant bought a truck from the streets department, they pay the streets department.
Cause they're an enterprise.
Can, can I clarify on that? So this is what I would, I would propose going forward.
Yeah. Okay.
Tammy can speak to that, what's been done in the past, but. So if we are transferring equipment um, from an enterprise account, water, wastewater to a general fund account, um, or if we're transferring from a general fund to another general fund department, it doesn't make a whole lot of sense to have uh, a payment for that, or transfer a payment. Um, and I mean, when you're transferring from general fund to general fund, again, it's all, all that money is being, is essentially coming from one pot anyway, so if.
Sure.
I mean, if you wanna budget the next year to account for that transfer of equipment, you can, but when, when they're sharing those funds, to me it doesn't make sense, I mean, you're just, you're, you're like writing a, a check from general to general, so. And then when you're going from the enterprise to general again, that we're so stretched on general fund dollars, um, where we have a lot more control over our utility departments. Uh, so they typically ha- are designed to be able to incur those larger capital costs because of the way they operate. It makes sense to me to transfer that older equipment uh, to the general fund without a, a payment being made, whereas if we're transferring from, something from general to an enterprise fund, then typically we would, we would compensate for that back into the general fund just a, just again because the difference in um, revenue, um.
And control of that.
Co- control of revenues essentially. And, and again, we don't have to do it that way, that is, you guys can make that call, but that's what I would recommend.
It works out convenient for the L C C, but at some point, there might not be trucks for them to just have, should they start putting money away to, to buy a truck once in a while?
I mean,
Eight dollars and ten cents per thousand, that's all you got.
Again, you certainly can, it's, it's just, it's just a, again, you, you could, and, but it's just what, um, what are you not doing to tuck away that money? And so again, it's all, all a balance, but to me it makes sense, again, when you've got more control over the utility revenues and they've got older equipment. It's not like we're just buying, it's not a shuffle of, of funds by buying something brand new and then automatically transferring it. This is an uh, old, um, extremely used truck that's still newer than what the parks have.
What they have.
Just because they already have even older equipment. Um, I, to me it makes sense.
They get hand-me-downs. It's more beneficial for us.
We still don't have a true operating cost if they're just getting stuff.
Well, but the other part of that is then you could potentially be putting more stress on the water and wastewater's budgets. Because if they're just basically giving it to another department, that's seven thousand, ten thousand, whatever out of their budget that they could have.
You, you are putting more stress on their budget to that, to that amount. I guess the way I look at it again is, um, A, we have, we have more control over the revenues to cover that. The overall percentage of that capital cost is, is smaller than i- in the, the general fund and, and I just think we're, we're so stretched trying to um, move forward in our general fund departments that um, that makes sense, but, but you're right, I mean, it does add cost to that.
It might be something worth taking a look at at some future date. Just to have a discussion about it.
Okay.
And when we do that, it'd be nice to know if we have record over the last how many years what's gone back and forth within the city. Like how many dollars in the last five years or ten years has, do you know what I'm saying? I mean, it always helps to have numbers.
All right, moving on. All those in favor to pay the bills signify by saying yes.
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 Opposed, carried. Eleven point oh city administrators report.
Uh, last Monday, we had a hometown pride meeting that I thought was really positive, um, had some new members uh, attend. And uh, they, they seemed to wanna be very involved in uh, a lot of the downtown projects especially, but um, really in any initiative in moving the community forward and uh, it was good to see that, that energy, um. Uh, last Tuesday, I was in Des Moines for with the Iowa League of Cities for their legislative day, speaking with our representatives on different legislative that is of concern to the city, um. Ev- I mean, every year there's different things on how they wanna change um, stuff related to city operations and so just trying to keep things again in uh, the best interest and of, of the city and, and retain as much local control, um. We did uh, close our deadline on the logo competition and received a total of eight submissions. Um, those are still being reviewed by our panel and then at some point we'll bring our recommendation to you guys to approve the winner of that contest. Um, last week, Chief Hoyt and I met with uh, Sheriff Grover and uh, Jones County dispatcher Stephanie Coffey um, regarding the testing of our outdoor warning system for weather sirens. And those will be tested going forward uh, every month uh, on the first Saturday of the month at noon. So that'll start March second, this Saturday.
Sorry, Jack, do you say weekly or monthly?
Monthly.
First Saturday?
First Saturday of the month, but.
Is that gonna be in the, like Tom prayer or stuff to let people know this time?
It, it's been put on Facebook and we'll put it up again on social media throughout the week to hopefully catch more people and it should be in the, the paper this Thursday, that's my understanding.
I mean, Mr. Custis is the one that's up there right next to the Y, guess he's moved, you know, he was the one that
Right.
Just so he would be. I would give him a phone, phone call. Yeah.
Yeah.
And maybe a couple of the neighbors up there too, just so they're aware. Yeah, it's right there.
Yep.
Is that the only one close to houses?
No, but I mean, he's the one that had the.
Right.
He's the closest.
He's the closest.
Closest, yeah.
That's what I meant, but.
We have four total sirens, but yeah, that would be the closest.
Is the downtown siren here, one time it was, was it disconnected and is it reconnected?
It's gone.
There's, there's no siren downtown anymore.
No, there's no siren here anymore. Gone and sold.
The four locations are Iowa Street, South Garnaville, North Williams and Tower Road.
Oh, Tower Road, okay.
They're not quite as close to Iowa than like the one up there.
Yeah. I think that's, oh, one, one more question. Just wanna point out again, on any issue, my goal is that there's always room for improvement. We've never, there's, nothing's ever been perfected, um, but uh, just a, maybe a kind of joking reminder that we're not the only city that struggles with snow removal.
Oh.
Just from my trip to Des Moines, but, so you can see the state capital and uh, unshovelled sidewalk and a mountain of snow at the curb, so it's, it's every city struggles with it, it's, but, but again, I'm not discounting that we can't do better.
I was in Tipton, Clarence and Stanwood this weekend, oh, and Mechanicsville. And all four communities, their roads are all bumpy, it was just, it's awful. There's snow, it's, yeah, everyone I was in.
That is all I've got to report.
All right. Twelve point oh mayor and council reports on boards and commission.
Both E C cog and um, George County Economic Development are meeting this week, so I don't have anything on either one.
Okay, nobody. Our landfill one will be the first of the month, so. All right, moving on, thirteen point oh public with business with accounts on items not on the agenda.
Um, we're in building owner downtown, uh, one quick question, who's the gentleman sitting next to you?
Bryce Rickles.
Okay.
Got some questions. On uh, gonna start with the, I don't know what the technical name we did, but I'm gonna call it the facade program. You guys are, are those kinda, you gotta, um. One, I'd like to know what part of the building, I've missed the meetings. My, my, my call, I guess, but uh, how far does the facade go? I know it goes eighteen inches in. Does it go to the basement floor? Does it go to the sidewalk? Where does it go?
Can he get with Derek to have a conversation about this?
But the city's involved in this, correct? Correct. That's, that's, I wanna, I want the city's input on my questions too.
The specific answer to your question would depend on what the grant allows.
Okay.
So, so I'm, I'm not sure how it affects the basement. I don't think it affects the basement, but I mean, depending on, you know, if there's stability issues, you know, they, they want to ensure that their funds are used well so they don't wanna put a bunch of money to a facade that's gonna crumble because, so, I mean, there's, kind of a, it would just depend on circumstance, but.
Okay. And on that, will the building owners and or participants of this program be required, before the city sticks any money in any building, at their cost, be required to have a structural engineer come in, look at the rest of the building to see what kinda shape the building's in? Uh, before anybody sticks any tax dollars in it to repair it? The point is, fixing the front of the facade and having the rest of the building junk is not a good idea.
Um, so a couple things. One, the city would be required to bring an architect on board and I don't know the exact requirements for them to inspect the entire building, but they will be involved. And again, I, I'm pretty confident um, in the uh, I mean, th- there are federal funds passing through the state, the state's gonna make sure that, that those funds aren't being wasted. And it's not a new program, so they've, they've had time to see things go bad, um, and figure, figure out, so I'm sure there's.
Um, if the state requires just the front of the building to be structural, is the city of Anamosa still willing to give these people the money to fix their building, their property? If the rest of the building is junk, therefore my question once is.
We, we, we have not, I mean, we have not yet determined which buildings will be included or not, so we have several interested property owners.
My understanding is twenty-one buildings and seventeen owners, I believe is what the paper said?
Uh, I think it's the opposite flip, flip that, I think it's like seventeen owners and like twenty-one buildings, but, but um, roughly.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Uh, we again can have a maximum pro- uh, project value of a million dollars if we have at least ten buildings included. Um, we want to have the most competitive application, so we're not going to include every building owner that wants to be included. We're gonna pick the best buildings to include in that application so that we have the best chance of getting those funds.
And I, I, I think I understand, you know, we try to get the money. But I guess I still personally have an issue with fixing the front of a property owner's building. But I guess I still personally have an issue with fixing the front of a property owner's building if the rest of the building is junk.
All the buildings will be vetted, there's not, what he's saying is, just because we have twenty that want the buildings done, doesn't mean the twenty are gonna qualify to be done. They will be vetted.
Yes. But are are we just, is that Jackie, is your name Jackie?
There'll be. Yeah.
Could you, I I might have a question for you, could you just step in a minute while you're here? But I I guess either I am completely missing something or I'm not getting my question across. And I might be missing in or both because my mind is still working, I'm not physically. Um, but I guess my my concern is, I'll just say what my concern is, I guess is, I think it's wasteful for the city to stick a dime in the front of someone's building. Regardless of the funds and everything checks out okay and say, okay, here's your eighteen inches, if, I think that's what it is, eighteen inches. If the rest of the building is in bad shape. I mean, you go down and you look at some of these buildings, you drive down the alleys, you drive down, you look around these places. And yeah, hey, let's fix up, and and don't get me wrong, I'm for fixing up the downtown, believe me, I am, I'm all about saving the old buildings. Anybody that knows me knows this. But sticking money in a building that is in bad shape, the rest of it, I think, until the rest of the building is fixed up, it shouldn't be done. That's my opinion, so.
And I think just about everybody here will probably agree with you on that. I don't know if anybody, I mean, the whole purpose, Tom, is that there's sustainability. It's not just to put lipstick on a pig, it is to create sustainability.
I hope not, because that's that's, and that's my understanding of this whole thing, is putting lipstick on a lot of pigs.
Right. No, no.
That's my understanding of it.
And if you talk to Derek, he's the one, the city has approved to do the application and to gather information. But this grant isn't until twenty twenty, so it's not like we're running and hurrying and getting one in yet before the end of this year. We're taking our time and doing research, and Derek is the one at Jones County Economic Development.
I know, he's he's been down that road quite a bit and and knows.
Yeah. Yeah, so he would really be able to answer all your questions thoroughly.
But and 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 I and I know this, I still want, because I know the city's gonna be involved in this, so I'd like to know the city's opinions and where. And and maybe some of this is premature, I might have to come back in a a year and ask the questions again, and believe me, I'm not afraid to do that.
Sure.
So if it's an LCC, LLC, or a corporation. And you're vested in this. This is gonna be kind of a two-part, so if they tear into a building. And they open up a can of worms, as someone called it. Use a hundred thousand dollars, I guess, for a for example, so fifty from the state, twenty-five from the city, and twenty-five from the landlord. One, if you tear into that and everybody's committed to this hundred thousand dollars, then. Oh, now we have more problems, we have more repairs, because once again, anybody that knows these old buildings, you open something up and you can open up a real problem. And they'll, is it gonna be on the owner's checkbook that the rest of this money comes out? Or is the owner gonna say, jeez, I only have twenty-five thousand dollars, so now what do we do? Is the city gonna cough up and choke up more money? Or do we not know this, have we not passed this part yet, and I'm premature on my question, questions?
So I guess I I would say first, and maybe you weren't aware of this, but we have we have a policy for five minutes per speaker on this section of the meeting.
No, I wasn't aware of that.
And and we've we have exceeded that, I guess I'll answer your question, we did cover this in our sessions that we had with uh building owners. I I hope you received a uh invite to those meetings.
It was gone, couldn't make.
But but we covered this and there do, there are occasionally instances where the projected cost is not correct. And we have a extra cost, those are those are going to be um. The responsibility of the property owner, unless we have extra funds that aren't needed in other buildings that we can re-move over to to yours. But the city's total amount won't won't increase due to those um extra costs, if that makes sense. So if we project somebody else's building at a hundred thousand, it really will take seventy-five, we now um twenty-five thousand that we can move over to your your. Share that we can move over to your building, 'cause you write extra. But but if everybody's at their max and you go over, it would be on on property owner.
So I guess, no, I was, one, I was not aware of the five minutes. Two, I'm gonna see that as uh, nobody wants to hear my questions. Three, let me just kind of sum this up then, and if somebody else has questions, then maybe I can come back and do another five minutes.
No, you get five minutes a night.
Okay, so.
You can get more time, as much time as you want, by getting put on the agenda.
Let let me, okay, just let me, let me, let me sum this up, because I thought it was kind of interesting she's here, so. My understanding, and Chief Mike, I might not agree with this, mold issues, leaky roof, handicap accessible, really poor. Pools and dish repair, LCCs problems, a fire, and and somebody mentioned the fire department. And to me, and I and I, if I understand you correctly, you said something about going around and doing a work comp. I don't know what you call it, anyway, to me, mold would be a one heck of a work comp claim. And if that's the case, and these guys are in there working to mold a building. I guess what I'm trying to say is, I think there's a whole lot of places that money should go besides someone sticking money. I I chose to buy my buildings, I chose the problems, I chose to fix them. And I'll tell you what, I'm glad to say that I'm gonna fix my building without a dime of the taxpayers' money. You know, I just, I can't believe that, and maybe I'm premature on some of this stuff, I don't know. But I just think it is utterly ridiculous when there should be money going, does the city borrow the money, where's money coming from? Do we have, does the city have the money right now to pay for this program?
The intention would be to borrow the money and have them, at least partially repaid back through tax increment finance.
Borrow the money. And and. Give the property owners something that they should take care of themselves. Twenty-five thousand dollars, please use that hundred thousand dollars, that twenty-five thousand dollar share of this of theirs goes a long way, and I know this. Goes a long way in the front of these buildings. When the city has to borrow the money to pay for someone's property, that is just utterly ridiculous, that's my opinion.
Thank you, Tom.
That was my own question, I guess, was the whole thing.
Thanks, Tom.
Mike Gearboard, Formula Five North Division. Um, I'm assuming I can't yield my five minutes to Mr. Gergen.
No.
Okay, now I got my own call. Uh, I'm under a little difficulty in City Hall this morning, and wasn't satisfied after with with the answers we got. So I'm coming to you, Council, Jacob, Mager. Um, we're in the business of trying to bring people, I am anyway, my my, one of my businesses, bring people to this town. And I've and I've talked to you about this before, we should be making it easier, not more difficult for these people. So I'll give you the perfect example of this, this morning, at the at the end of the month, which is Friday, we have tenant, moving to town in one of our properties. Ahead of time, they sent a filled-out application for water services, signed a check for the one hundred dollar deposit, signed to the city. My wife, who's in our business, comes up here and tries to get this taken care of, so because she's moving in on Friday, needs water on Friday. You know, the city's policies, they don't do same-day connect, so I can understand that, I've been in the business. But she was turned away. Because Tammy claims that the law in the state of Iowa says you have to have photo ID. So my wife says, well, how about if she passes us a picture of her photo ID and we'll bring it to you? No, she has to be standing in front of me so I can look at her with the ID, state law. Okay?
Can I ask a photo ID for what?
But anyway, I you can ask in just a second when I, when I'm done, okay? Um, so if that state law, I'm assuming it's through Iowa Utility Board, of which I'm very familiar. Um, I would love to see that code copied off and and highlighted for me to read. But isn't it funny that electric and gas do not have this policy, they're another utility, they don't have that policy.
Those are not governed by the state.
I already heard your answer, so I'm not satisfied with it, so yes, what what's your question then?
So somebody sends a check, sends an application, puts it in the mail, and we have it a week before we need hookup. What do we need ID for?
Identity theft protection, we're required by state law to have that person in front of us, so that your picture matches you. That's what we're required of city government.
So somebody from out of town that's moving here, and you hauls, gonna show up, the movers are gonna show up, they've closed on their house and they need to go. Can't get water hookup, and if it's on a Friday, it's gonna be next week before they have water hookup, because they didn't have ID?
Mm-hmm.
So they couldn't have dropped that off, scheduled the hookup for Friday, she shows up on Friday and shows your.
That's fine, if she wants to show up on Friday.
Well, was that explained?
That's not how it was explained. You're saying she has to come in with her application, get this all business done on that day, and then obviously you can't get hooked up on that day.
Ideally, yes, she should be in front of us before we do it, we're bending the law to allow her to do that the next day.
You're bending what law? To 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 hook her up the next day?
The identity theft protection. Yes, the identity theft protection.
That's your own policy to hook up the next day?
No, it's a state code.
You have to wait one for hours to hook up water?
No, I'm talking about a person walking in front of me.
Yeah.
Not that people are gonna do it, but the state law says, for identity theft, I have to have that person in front of me with their picture ID. So when they're filling out the application, they are who they say they are, that's to protect the customer.
Okay, now let's move on to what you just said just seconds ago, that you can't, that you, that they can't get hooked up till the next day. That's not, that's not, that's not, that's not state code, that's your policy here.
It is the, but is our policy.
If this is the case, we need to fix this, Mike, we need to fix that, because, I mean, I just know that. I've sold a lot of property, and people show up for the closing, and from there, they go to the house. And they have ahead of time gotten the utilities turned on, so that they can bring their family there. They've closed on the house, they've left, if they don't do this, they have nowhere to go tonight. There's gotta be a, there's gotta be a way we can do this.
To to to.
There's gotta be a way we can do this.
More, your average customer we deal with is somebody who is after hours, was showing them places. If they if they pass our uh application process, they're granted the the place, they have jobs for living. And they can't come here ahead of time, say on Thursday, to get water hooked up on Friday. It it's usually a one-day thing, they like to come, we do a lot too, we 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 have to sign a lease, and then they gotta come here. 'Cause they've already got their electric and gas hooked up, trust me, that that all's fine and managed. But can you see, Jacob, I'm gonna ask you, can you see the dilemma?
I understand the difficulty, uh, I'm not familiar with the the state law, but I uh would like to look at that first. And then uh we'll we'll try to make this as as simple as we can and still protect the the customers.
Okay, would you mind finding that, and I I have no problem coming to the City.
Called red flag.
City Hall, I don't, you're short, would you mind? Do you honestly know where this is in the code?
I'm 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 gonna interrupt here, and I know from the banking side of things, we gotta do that. But I also know there's ways around of giving a ten-day leeway. So that they could have it hooked up and within ten days, they have to come in and show you the ID.
And that's fine, if that's, but it's not written for us, so we follow it to the law.
Okay, then then here's what I'm gonna ask, we review all of the water and wastewater policies. And we go through them and we can change them then.
That's, and let's put it on the agenda for next time, like, let's get it done sooner rather than later.
And and I I I talked to you about this about two weeks ago, of going through the wastewater and water policies, and this is just pressing it forward.
For the disclosure, I did visit with Rich about this, and he tells me that in addition to to maybe correcting this issue, you're already on the topic of of credit. Correct? Is that, that's a big step forward.
Credit card and debit cards.
From the first century.
Yeah.
Yeah, credit cards and debit cards.
These working people should be able to call in their credit card numbers and get this taken care of, instead of taking time off from work. Because you're only open so many hours, they work those same hours, so.
We are working on uh credit debit and e-check and online payments.
Good to hear, good to hear, we should do whatever we can to make it easy on people to move our community.
Excellent.
All right, thank you.
Very good.
Good. It is hard to understand how you can get your lights and your gas without doing those.
That's because they're not city government.
Oh, I see.
We're city government, we're different, we have to follow that red flag rule.
I'm sure there's cities that make it a lot easier than what we do though.
Yeah.
If we didn't have to deal with, I shouldn't say we.
It's not usually that complicated.
If I didn't have to deal with complaints about the water department, you nearly wouldn't need half of us sitting here, because it would run itself.
Moving on, fourteen point O, annual performance evaluation of the city administrator and employment agreement. Will be going into closed session.
Well, I'll make a motion to go into closed session for, per Iowa State Code, Section twenty-one point five I.
Second.
First by Rich, second by Betty. Oh, in favor, signature by both of you, yes.
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 Oppose.
Thank you. You too.
See you, Jackie.
Hey, thanks, Jackie, it's good to see you again, like always.
Come back when you got another check.
I will.
Yeah, you can bring money to me too, in your time.
Thanks, Jackie.
Sure, Tom, if you have other questions.
Oh, I got loads.
Write them down, and I can get you answers.
Oh, I got loads. I got loads.
Yeah.
All right, thank you, have a good night.
Thanks, Tom. That's kind of hard, 'cause all of that was discussed in the meetings.